Okay, it is 11 o'clock. We will call the COW to order and Jessica or Tom, whoever wants to start.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here as we talk about Land Use Management Organization study. So today, we want to talk to you about staff and stakeholder feedback, and then we'll roll into survey information, which is received from other counties. From there, we'll go into commissioner priorities and goals before we talk about some different options, and then finally wrap up with some questions that need answers. So first thing we're going to start with is staff feedback. So the HR team met with staff in GIS, building, planning and zoning, environmental health, survey, and GIS. Most of those were face-to-face conversations where we got to really have good conversations with individuals. Some of the conversations we had were over female or teams, and then there were a couple of people who, for scheduling reasons, we couldn't meet with. But we met with a vast majority of staff. Overall, when it comes to the organization's structure, the consistent feedback that we heard was there was support for the notion of creating two new department head positions, a land use management director and a county surveyor. Staff also really coalesced around the idea of GIS remaining with survey. I think it goes together like a feather in jelly versus a partnership with IT, which we state in some other organizations. Some other considerations that we heard from staff or things that they were looking for direction on was there's a desire to expand environmental health services and do more there depending upon what the long-term goals of this program are. We heard feedback about the Recorder's Office as a standalone department. And then we have individuals, of course, in survey and GIS whose positions are shared with a city or a county, and there's partnership that happens there, and so curiosity around the continued relationships there. When we look at comments about operations, I want to temper these comments with the knowledge that we're in a period of people and uncertainty. So a lot of the things that you will see on this slide are both in the positive and in the negative. Whenever we talk to departments about operations, communications is one of the words that you will hear brought up. And so we had individuals who were really pleased with how communications are, how much access they have to leadership. And then there were folks who expressed dissatisfaction with communications, telling that there was perhaps a lack of transparency and some sort of issues. When we talk about operations, some said business as usual, their service delivery is being maintained or improved in some cases, and then there were others who were critical and said there were delays in processes that were unnecessary. There's opportunities there of first improvement. Some expressed concern with technology challenge. There was a lot of empathy for the overwhelm or perceived overwhelm of those individuals who stepped into interim positions. All right. Staff were generally positive about the office arrangements. They liked who they were office with. On the flip side of that, people were not negative about passports or that function itself, but just, you know, there's been some movement, and passports is now on first floor, so there's some individuals who are less than satisfied with that arrangement. And then, of course, when we get into team dynamics and relationships, there's those who feel like things are going well, and there's those who feel like things are not going well. And I think, again, that's to be expected when you're in a period of transition. Some folks will adapt to that better than others, and some folks will have a harder time with that. And I think once we move into a place where we've got a direction, some of those things will start to work themselves out, and then some of those things will be the job of whoever fulfills those roles to work on. At this point, I do want to, you know, usually we do thank yous at the end, but I want to do an intermittent thank you here or thank you at this point in time because there was a lot of, I don't want to say hard conversations, but it is hard to get into a room and be really candid about your thoughts. And so I want to thank everyone in these departments for their participation, and I want to acknowledge that transition periods are wrought with uncertainty, and staff have really kept calm and carried on providing really good service to Good Hugh County.
And I just want to back that up. I think all three of us had some really great conversations with the staff, and we learned a lot, and I hope that they learned some as well as far as a direction that we're trying to look forward in too.
So from there, I want to talk about our stakeholder feedback. We surveyed individuals both in and outside of the organization. And again, we saw people expressing support for creation of two new department head positions, the land use management director and a county surveyor. When it came to the county surveyor as a department head and the licensure status, there were individuals who expressed that it would create functional redundancy in the survey department by having the county surveyor as a licensed position. And there were others who recognized and said that it's going to limit our candidate pool in the future, and it's going to limit the upward mobility of individuals in that department because if that position is overseeing survey, GIS, and the Recorder's Office, there's quite a bit of specialized knowledge and experience that go into being a county surveyor that would not be attainable for those in the Recorder's Office, for example. Stakeholders were really complimentary to the GIS function and said it's a feather in Good Hugh County's cap. And then there was feedback that there's potentially some unnecessary redundancy between the proposed alum director position and the planning and zoning administrator position. I think one of the comments we heard was, is there enough work for both of those positions? From there, I'm going to turn it over to Tom to talk about the information we received from the surveys.
So we did a couple of things for surveys. One, we sent emails to every administrator, land use management director, and surveyor in their respective counties, as well as sent them a survey-based, a Survey Monkey survey. And so what we have is information that came back, I know I was going to miss. Information that came back from 41 different counties, either through the surveys or through emails where they were sending us their org charts and answering a specific list of questions. It was curious that we would get sometimes different answers from the administrator and the land use manager in the same county, but we tried to sort through all of that. What we found is that there is obviously a lot of variety, that there's no one right way to do things. We found two counties that were very similar in their structure as we had been under LISA, but every county has varying degrees and different offshoots of it. We found that the smaller counties oftentimes tended to have more department heads, that it was spread out over a wider variety, and the larger counties had department heads or deputy administrators that oversaw multiple departments and built it out that way. We also anecdotally saw and as well in the survey, found that how they based their departments was based on the talent pool they had. If they had a long-term surveyor retire and they didn't have a way to fill that position, that position merged into another department, similar to how LISA's department became the way it did. So a lot of it is personnel based on how they made their decisions. So looking at some of the different departments individually, the Recorder's Office of the respondents, 27 counties have standalone Recorder's Offices, or 66% of our respondents. Four of those also oversee the assessor's office or surveyor and/or land use. So there's different department heads for different things. It's flipped upside down differently than how we have things. Eight counties, the county recorder was under land use, and four counties, it was under the auditor treasurer. For the county surveyor, 11 counties contract their surveyor services out. Six of them are under public works, and four were under land use, and then many were independent on their own as well. For GIS, 12 of the counties had GIS under IT, which is no surprise. Four counties were under the county surveyor, and four were under public works, and then some still had standalone GIS departments as well. For environmental health, 17 counties had standalone departments, and 13 were under land use as we have it. So we have three different examples that we can show you of just org charts, again, just showing the variety of how they do things and break things out. So the example before you right now is Pine County. Pine County is about 2/3 of the population of Good Hugh County. You can see that under the administrator, they have a public works department, and that's where the surveyor's under. And then under the auditor treasurer, that's where recording zoning and land use is as well. And then I think GIS is under the administration. Is that this one? I'm not sure. Wright County, it was harder to look at their org charts, so we broke it down this way, so it's a little easier to see. But under planning and zoning, and they're a significantly bigger county than we are, obviously. They have a deputy county administrator that oversees planning and zoning and the property services. They have a separate Recorder's Office, separate surveyor department, and separate project administration department that GIS fits underneath. And then Morrison County, again, similar in size to us, a little bit smaller, but their county recorder is an elected position, and that's, again, how some of these departments are different as well. Some are elected, surveyors are elected, recorders are elected, they have different degrees of that. The land services director has GIS, the assessor, planning, zoning, building, and septic underneath it, and then they contract out their surveyor. So again, the takeaways, it was tough to come away with a single answer of how every county does it because everybody does it differently based on their need and their personnel structures. It varies greatly based on the talent. So there was a clear answer that came from this survey.
All right. So after consolidating all that information, we asked the board to help us understand their goals in this process. And so we sent out a survey to all commissioners, and I thank you all for giving your time and attention to respond to that. Each commissioner was asked to rate one of the following six theme areas in importance. A score of one would be low importance, and five would be high importance. And so looking at cost savings, strengthening subject matter expertise, fostering a positive work culture, improving collaboration and integration, enhancing internal and external customer service, and then establishing streamlined decision-making structures. The good news is that you're all on a similar page. The bad news is that we didn't really come away with a clear priority because most of these items were rated equally or very nearly equally. So as we prepare to look at options, I want to preface these slides. These options are just that, they're optional ways at looking at the land use management functions. With a lack of consensus around the goals for this endeavor, the options we'll present today mirror what we might see in other counties and may, in some cases, contradict the feedback that we've received from our land use management staff. We've also included a deputy county administrator option that was requested at the most recent budget workshop. We did share these slides with the directors of IT, finance, and taxpayer services, and public works. They've not, however, had the benefit of hearing the narrative that accompanies these slides, and we've not had in-depth conversations regarding the feasibility of these options. I expect that all these directors have many questions about these potential options and are eager to learn what the board's impressions of these are. I thought let's start by just doing a refresher of what the current structure is. Of course, we've got the county administrator there with three HR managers reporting to them, three administration staff reporting to them, and then the directors of facilities, maintenance, IT, that's an extension, court services, public works, finance, and taxpayer services, and then land use. So altogether, that's 13 direct reports for our county administrator, and then I've also noted our elected county attorney, elected sheriff, and the HHS director, who are part of the management team as well. All right. So as far as maintaining the status quo, you know, there is certainly a potential for cost savings if we were able to backfill that position lower than step 12, which is what it's budgeted for. Maintaining the status quo, of course, maintains the head count, maintains the number of direct reports to the county administrator. But again, as we've talked about, there's anticipated difficulty in finding a qualified candidate with that surveyor licensure. The candidate pool is going to be limited because of that qualification. And again, you know, thinking ahead for the future, there's limited individuals internally who would meet that qualification as well. I can't exactly say that it would be a streamlined structure. We wouldn't be adding any complexity to what we already have, and I think we see good collaboration and integration, and so I would hope that that would continue as well. In this case, the cost is dependent upon we are able to hire.
Just a question. You know, one of the things we've always had in this county is working directors, and they actually are working directors. If we were to hire status quo, what would you see? I can't figure out what kind of a working director that would be. I mean, LISA was able to do zoning, to do, I mean, she could do all those jobs. Who would you hire that would, what would the job, what would the working part of it be other than managing employees? That's, you don't have to answer it because I think the answer is, we don't know.
Well, and where I was going to go is, you know, exactly. I'm not intimately familiar with that position, and I think we've said all along to find somebody who could do what LISA did. I mean, we are really looking for a needle in the haystack, or a unicorn, or whatever analogy that you want to use there. And I think the time for that person to really get up to speed and be as effective as she was is significant.
And I'm not saying that that's what they would need to be, but as working directors, John can do almost anything in IT. He knows the bones of the system, and that was what LISA had. She had that. So if you were to hire somebody, which, I mean, would they be a surveyor? Would they be, I mean, that's the part I'm having struggles with maintaining status quo because I don't know how that would work.
Yes, go ahead. Just quickly on that, it really depends on what the candidate pool looks like, and it also significantly depends on whether you keep the licensure for the survey piece in there. Because if you have that, you're for sure getting a survey because you're saying that's our minimum, one of them. If that's not in there, if it's maybe a preferred, then you likely will get some candidates that have the land use side of things, maybe a surveyor also, I don't know. But again, it's going to come down to the candidate pool. You are going to have more candidates if you have that as a preferred as opposed to a requirement. And you might find another LISA. We don't know.
How long is that process to become certified for a surveyor?
Well, Jeff, it's yours, but Jeff would have to explain it. Three, four years? To become a licensed surveyor. And just because LISA had that, I don't think we should get set on that that position has to have that. I mean, you've got to have knowledge about surveying, but you don't necessarily have to be a licensed surveyor to be a land use management director.
I think she started.
I believe that's correct.
All right. So before we get into the options, I just wanted to put the financials in front of you. So for 2024, we've budgeted the land use management director at step 12 of grade 121, and so with pay and benefits, that's $215,000. One of the options that's proposed, option one that we'll roll into next, includes a land use management director and county surveyor, both at grade 117. And so with pay and benefits for those, we're at $307,000, and that does add one person to the organization. So without further ado, option one is land use management director and county surveyor as proposed by Lisa Haney.
Yep, I'm putting it on. I'm trying to remember to put it off, remember to put it on, and so. But if we were backfilling positions, they might be coming in at lower steps or.
They might be.
So it could be that the 307 versus the 215 wouldn't be quite that much difference.
Correct. Yep. All right. So just drilling down a little bit, the land use management director would oversee building, planning, and zoning, and environmental health, and the county surveyor would provide direction for the Recorder's Office, survey, and GIS functions.
Where does passports fit in there? Is that recorders?
It's a little here and a little there because I think we have administrative assistant staff who do passports, and they are technically under the surveyor. All right. So some considerations with this option. Of course, when you've got directors who are overseeing a smaller scope, you have the opportunity there to strengthen subject matter expertise. There's opportunities to enhance customer service. Should also consider that this does add one FTE to the organization, one direct report to the county administrator. And again, as written, the county surveyor position requires licensure, and so we want to just note the potential recruiting and succession challenges there. The board is able to say, hey, we want to create a second department head position, but we don't think that they need to be a licensed surveyor, and then perhaps we want to call it something different at that point in time, but that does open up some options too. Again, as Commissioner Butcher noted, you know, the cost may or may not be that $307,000. Any changes that we make to job duties, reporting relationships, though, could impact the comp worth and the pay grade of that position. And so, again, this is all, we won't estimate at this point. So option two we have here, we are impacting potentially the IT director, the finance and taxpayer services director, and alum director. So what this might look like is a land use management director that now, instead of reporting or having just building, planning, and zoning and environmental health, also has survey. Finance and taxpayer services would be providing oversight for the Recorder's Office, and information technology would be overseeing GIS. So as I mentioned at the beginning of these options, this is one of those options that is contrary to staff feedback. You know, as we talked about earlier, there really was a feeling that survey and GIS go together like peanut butter and jelly, and so in this case, it would be separating those two functions that staff tell us work really well together. Some things to consider with option number two, we are maintaining head count and the number of direct reports to the county administrator. In this case, the board would need to designate both a county surveyor and a county recorder. The land use management director position was graded at 117, and we'd need to explore whether adding survey to that would change any of the comp worth of that position. Additionally, if an existing individual was designated as county recorder or county surveyor, there'd be an impact to the comp, there could be an impact to the comp worth of their position, which would be an added cost, and we'd want to explore that with DDA as well. All right. Moving on to option number three. This is very similar to option two, and again, runs a little bit different than staff feedback that we had heard. In this case, we'd be impacting the public works director, finance and taxpayer services director, and land use management director. So in this option, land use management director position remains unchanged from what was proposed in option one. Finance and taxpayer services would be overseeing the Recorder's Office, but in this case, public works would be providing oversight and direction for GIS and survey. As we look at this option, I do want to kind of recall conversations that we had earlier this year when we were looking at the special projects coordinator out at public works. And at that time, there was discussion about, you know, potentially reducing the number of functions that were performed out at public works because of the significant amount of work that needs to be done there. And so I recognize and just want to point out that, you know, if we're talking earlier in the year about reducing what a department does, it's contrary to talk about adding things at this point in time. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. So again, the considerations on this are pretty much the same as with option two. If we were to appoint a county recorder and a county surveyor, that of course could impact the comp worth of existing individuals' positions, and we'd want to work closely with DDA to evaluate that to the costs as of the year because of that. Option four is the final scenario that we're presenting today. Again, this option is born out of a request from the most recent budget workshop. This option creates two deputy county administrator positions who report to the county administrator in addition to the assistant to the county administrator. Depending upon the board's vision, departments would be assigned to a deputy county administrator. There are plethora of ways that this could be done, and so this slide is purposely open-ended. Because this model opens up even more potential, staff does recommend further study apart from the land use management discussion before proceeding. We're making some really big assumptions when we bring the financials back here because all of this is pure speculation. If we assumed that a deputy county administrator would be pay grade 122, and that we're implementing two deputy county administrators, we're looking at a cost of $420,000. And again, this is a significant estimate and significant increase to the county, and we are adding an FTE to the organization if we were to pursue this option. So when we get to the considerations, again, we're adding an FTE to the organization by, really at that point, not proceeding with a land use management director at 117, not proceeding with a county surveyor at grade 117, but adding two deputy county administrator positions potentially at grade 122. This does significantly reduce the number of direct reports to the county administrator. There are, just like land use, there are lots of different ways that a deputy county administrator model could be implemented, and so, you know, there's lots of things to explore and consider if we were to look at that sort of model. And then, as we've talked about with options two and three, the same board action would be needed to appoint or designate both a county recorder and a county surveyor. I've given the best I can for cost, but again, it's very much to be determined with firm interest, and then proceeding with writing job descriptions and exploring all of that.
I ask a question here, please. Where did we come up with two deputy county administrators? Was that? I know, I spoke with Scott about having one, maybe possibly, deputy administrator. I mean, is this?
This is an option that I put together because we didn't have, you know, the board's consensus around any one of those different goals or theme areas, and so it is something that I just kind of.
And these are all built on themes that we've seen in other counties and tried to kind of narrow it down to just a select few options to look at.
Okay.
Chair, I just want to note, they're just showing one example. If you look at other org charts, there's anywhere between one and four out there as far as deputy county administrator models. So, and I think they've said it, and they'll probably say it again, but if that's truly something the board wants to look hard at, it probably should be a different study rather than the land use study.
So I wanted to bring us back to our goal or theme areas here. And so looking at each of the different options, the status quo does potentially provide some costs. cost savings. We think all of the options would work towards fostering a positive work culture. Again, it depends on who's in that position, you know, how quickly that that happens. Establishing streamlined decision-making structures, we can see efficiencies potential in all of the different options. When we look at strengthening subject matter expertise, we do think option number one presents the best opportunity for that. In other options, it might take a little longer for that to be realized. When we're looking at improved collaboration and integration, we think options one, two and three work best towards that goal. When we think about enhancing internal and external customer service, we think option one gets us there fastest. But again, there's potential with all of the options as well. So from there, I'd like to bring us into questions that need answers or Q and A's. And so first off, I'd like to gauge the board's, take the board's temperature on, you know, does the board want to maintain the status quo?
Go ahead, Jason.
So the only departments of what you researched was survey and GIS that you found from staff that said worked that well or close hand in hand that it is important to staff to maintain those two departments being in the same office close to one another?
No, no, we certainly heard from environmental health, planning and zoning and building that there was efficiencies and that they liked working with one another.
So can you answer, maybe we'd have to have somebody that's in surveying. So a lot of departments, we found that public works was under surveying. So is there similar duties, similar surveying, similar redundancies utilized by our public works department and their engineering and surveying crew that makes sense for us to utilize those same training, same background, same knowledge, same expertise, same, public works has licensed surveyors? Alex, yes?
I'm going to defer to Justin, to Scott.
Public Works does not have licensed surveyors. The work that we do for surveying does not require that licensure, but when work that is required to be done, that needs a licensed surveyor's signature, we go to the survey
We make no assessment, or would you make an assessment that it would fit under your department? That the experience or that what they do in a surveying department is similar to what you do, that they could work together, the similarities?
There's some general crossover, but the majority of the work that Mr. Ackblad and Ms. Hanny conducted is substantially different than what our needs are.
And just to follow up with Jeff, can you comment on the advantages of being part of public works or not being part of public works?
You'll need to come to a microphone too.
Or disadvantages?
Button on the bottom. Oh, the bottom of the microphone.
Morning. Yes, your question was about being paired with public works or being separated with public works. I guess we do, we do, surveying can be classified in a variety of ways. The things that we do here in, for the county surveyor work is different. Public works, I would say leans more toward construction type staking and topographic staking, things that would be more construction related. And while our office can do things of that nature, we specialize more in different aspects of land surveying and most of which requires to be a licensed land surveyor in the state.
Do you have an opinion about whether it makes sense to be joined more closely with public works or not?
I would say that it's worked very well, the current structure being separated from them. We work very closely with GIS and land survey, I think is a very good pairing.
Yes, Jess?
I'll just add some input. While the work that the survey department does differs from the majority of the survey work that our staff does, we have a lot of crossover with Jeff in that as our construction mantra has changed from a paving aspect to more of a grading aspect, we're routinely purchasing right of way. We need monuments established, we need property descriptions written. Alex Dickey routinely is working with that office and Jake Rezak, our assistant, to get that information and it needs to be done in a timely manner. You know, beyond, I don't know everything that is done in that office, but they split their time with Dodge County as well. Decreasing a survey position in that department is going to decrease a level of service for sure throughout the county. We have timely needs and in the current structure with being a survey person short, it's more difficult to get the information that we need when we need it, much less meet the intent of a contract with Dodge County. I know that's not all that they do, but those are a few things that are vitally important to us as public works. We do work with the rest of land use, routinely with SAM and as of late, the Septic Inspectors at Billsbury Park. So I would just encourage the board to remember that losing a surveyor is a detriment to the county and a decrease in service. Jeff and Ethan both were heavily involved in fieldwork and routinely Lisa was reviewing plats. The amount of plat work in that department has gone up dramatically, well, I would say within the last couple of years, Jeff. So while the board might feel that there's a struggle to replace the position or find another surveyor, until you actually step through that process, you're never really going to know who's out there. Lisa, if I remember correctly, came from Dodge, or from Dakota County. So, I mean, there's always that possibility of stealing someone from the metro. While not a guarantee, I think we got to remember that a level of service here is appropriate and remembering that we are also serving Dodge County. So that's all I have.
If I look at option one, and the adding one FTE is really replacing that surveyor position that Jeff is stepping out of and going into. If Jeff were the candidate, it would be, it would be to backfill whatever that is, if that happened. Or filling the department head position in option one.
I believe that there would also be a backfill in land use. So one person left and two people would be hired.
Yep, that's the added FTE to the organization.
Any other questions?
No.
Linda, go ahead.
Why do we have one of our surveyors doing another county? And it would be more beneficial to us if we didn't?
Sorry. For years, the counties had a longstanding tradition of partnering with other organizations, both within the county and outside of the county. We've done it with GIS and survey. And that the, we were already providing the GIS services for Dodge County at the time where they lost their surveyor. And they asked if they paid the full cost of their side of it, if we'd provide those services for it. And we have done that for, boy, I don't know, Jeff, how many years have we done it? It's got to be, it's over 10.
It's been, I think it's been 18.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
This is a little bit of a joke question, but is there an admin cost on that?
Yes, there is.
Is it 10%?
I don't know exactly what it is, but it's actually, when I look back at as far as what we're charging, that's probably closer to true cost than any of these others have been.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah.
I'll add as well, with that agreement, Dodge County is also paying a portion of the software costs. It's a significant dollar amount.
Thank you.
Some of the capital expenses too, you know, the vehicle.
So there's no real cost to the county for doing that, but the issue might be if we have trouble hiring a surveyor, so we don't have enough to do our own work. Is that right? Jess is nodding his head here.
Right.
All right. Not necessarily hearing consensus on whether we want to maintain the status quo. I do want to move on to the next question and ask, does the board favor one of the options presented today? Is there another option that you'd like to...
So are the main advantages to option two and three that it maintains the head count? Is that the main advantage? But we don't really know if it would, how much it would save money wise, if anything. Okay. And the disadvantage to option two and three is that Lisa, over many years, built a structure that seemed to work pretty well and flow pretty well. And we'd be disrupting that, which is significant to the people who work there and for the community to get used to. And then probably the other disadvantage, well, I guess if there, I didn't look at it close enough, but there's some advantage for people within those departments potentially to move up at this point. But with option two and three, if they're being kind of in new departments, there'd be less option for the moving up for the people within the departments?
It would change the opportunities that are available to them.
Okay. And I don't know if anybody who's working in these departments wants to speak to the pros and cons of you guys staying together versus splitting up. If you don't, that's okay, but if you do, now's the time to let us know what you think.
My name is Leigh, I'm not, and I work as GIS system specialist. I have a split position between Goodu County and City of Red Wing. Prior to my coming onboard with Lisa in 2015, I had worked for City of Red Wing for 10 years. And I worked in three departments out there. I spent seven years in planning, two years in IT, and then a year in public works, although that has been the persistent department that I work when physically I go over to City of Red Wing two days a week. That's a 50% split, I believe, on cost support for my position. And what I want to say is that survey, GIS as a standalone department or a subdepartment or however you want to call that, has been far and away the most successful model that I've worked under compared to, again, the land use, IT and public works model. Anyway, that was my comment. Thank you.
Yes, from my standpoint is if we don't have to hire more staff, that's, I would definitely lean towards that and hopefully somehow that could be worked out. You know, even if you have two hired at a lower rate, in five or six years, they're going to be up at the higher rate too. So if there are options that, you know, that's where I, you know, thought maybe this is the time to look more at the deputy administrator, you know? With an administrator and a deputy administrator working together, you know, what more can be accomplished and how much more can we cover? I think Briggs touched on it today, the communications officer, is that something that, do we throw another, if we do look at a county or a deputy administrator, does that job come into that too? You know, how many things can we throw at one or two people? You know, save all the money we can, that's what I like to do, but, you know, I don't know all the, you know, ins and outs of the communications on that too. Is that something we do need to look at right now? That's another position. You know, can that be absorbed into a...
I think, you know, I'll go back to an earlier comment where, you know, like maintaining the status quo and trying to backfill Lisa's position would be like finding a needle in a haystack or hiring a unicorn. I mean, I think then we're talking about hiring a unicorn with wings to try and find somebody who can do all of the land use things and be an effective communicator and lead the charge there. I think we're really looking for a niche position. And so I think if we are looking at doing a deputy county administrator model, I guess I'd like us to take a step back and say, you know, more than just trying to maintain or reduce head count, what are we trying to accomplish here? And so really look more at what our long-term goals are than just trying to, you know, put different things together. I think that that would help us.
I think that's just the reason why we ended up with a Lisa, is we just kept putting things together. And some of the two threes, two and three feels like that same thing. And while you can make arguments that they kind of fit together, the two director position, and I've always thought that since I got on this board and thought about when Lisa would leave, that we'd end up with two. I just couldn't picture us going back to creating departments that look like nothing else in the world. And I just, that's where I'm, I would lean towards one. I know it's an added head count, but I still think the work that all of those do in those two areas just mesh together 100%. So taking any piece of them apart just disrupts all of that. I mean, survey and GIS are like, that's like the fingers in a glove. They just all fit together and I just don't see, I don't see moving some of that would make much sense. Leery of it, very leery of it. So I would support one and see where that goes. I just...
I tend to agree with you, Brad. I think Lisa got there over, what, 20 years of working? And I think you said it would take multiple years if we tried to hire somebody to fit all of those spots. So I think that the reason we're looking at options is because we lost somebody pretty key who had a very broad range of knowledge and now we're figuring out what to do. But I think she built something that worked. It seems like her staff are pretty satisfied with the model and I think we'd have to have a pretty compelling reason to split that up in ways. And also, I guess I think Lisa spent a lot of time thinking about how it should look when she left. That doesn't mean we shouldn't consider other options, but we also should weigh pretty heavily somebody who, this was her baby and she's trying to leave it in the best possible condition.
And I will comment on option four, what Mr. Gresseth kind of alluded to. I mean, deputy directors is what we did in Health and Human Services and it really made a difference and it really works well. So I see in the future that we will go to something like that. I just don't think now's the time. I don't think right now is the time to do that. I think that's a very big reorg to do that. And I just don't think today's the time to do that. I agree with you. Eventually we'll get there. I guess that, you know, and it's timing. I mean, we have, but like you say, it's a unicorn with wings. I mean, granted, there's, you know, there are some talented people out there. I mean, now's the time to...
We don't know until we go looking.
Right. And now's the time to try it as less staff. We can always add more on if we need, you know, but to go out and get them and then all of a sudden, oh no, we really didn't need that. Or maybe something else would have worked. I mean...
There's a significant investment in time in writing that, you know, in writing that job to... that job description, having it evaluated, you know, considering all of that, though, too. And so I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that before we go out and...
Well, I would concur the moment with Brad and Susan about option one.
I think we've, in a roundabout way, answered question number three, but the final question was, are there any other objectives that the board has that we haven't addressed or looked at that you'd like to see when we bring our final report to the...
Anything more from the board?
Do you have to go write job descriptions for each of those individually?
So those job descriptions have already been written and evaluated by DDA for option one. I think the other thing that would be helpful to know is that the way that the county surveyor position is written is it is a licensed surveyor, and so we've talked a little bit about that. We've heard arguments for and against, and so I'm curious is, would we like to advertise both options? Do we have a feeling one way or the other?
Is there a way you can have it as preferred, but not necessary?
If it's preferred...
It means we still have to have a licensed surveyor on staff, but it may not be a department head, is what you're saying.
I'll just ask one question to Jeff again. Do... We do need somebody who can provide surveying skills in addition to who we already have. Is that correct? And does that mean they need to be licensed? But I think my question is, is if someone with a lesser level of skill that wasn't licensed, is that useful to the department or not? Okay. So preferred is a reasonable thing to say and see who puts their hat in the ring?
Oh, go ahead, Jess.
I just... I'd like to reiterate quickly that in the current structure, when Lisa was here, Jeff was performing surveyor-level work in the field in real time and in the office, needing that license, and so was Lisa. So while Jeff is still licensed and will remain that way, Jeff is only one person and cannot perform two functions at the same time separately. Lisa primarily dealt with administrative capacity while Jeff was dealing primarily with some of the field work. So I see a preferred need to have at least two licenses in that office to be able to perform the functions that are necessary for the county to provide the services that it has agreed to already. So if... Unless the board is looking at a decrease in service from that office, I would encourage you to maintain that level of licensure in that office. Even if it isn't at a department head-level status, you're still going to need people that can perform that work.
Well, shoot, now I forgot my question. It was a good one, I'm sure of it. I'm sure of it. Oh, I think it had... All right, so the surveyor. Isn't Ethan a surveyor? Is Ethan a licensed surveyor, certified? In training, okay. Well, I mean, it certainly makes sense to me that the top person would need to be a surveyor. So I would prefer to not see it as preferred. I'd rather see it as, yeah, we want you to be a surveyor.
Well, and we can go out and ask for it that way, and then if we get no applicants or not qualified applicants, we can always come back and change it.
True. I don't know what it takes to become the surveyor, but if it takes, as Jeff said, about four years or so, would... Could it possibly be that a candidate might be in the process of becoming a surveyor? Even that would be...
Yep. And so if the board's open to that, then we'd still want to have it in there as a preferred qualification, and because the person's in progress, they don't actually meet the minimum of having the licensure, so...
I understand that. I guess I was just thinking of it as kind of a stepping stone.
Sure, sure. And sometimes we've hired individuals and said, you know, this is a requirement and so determining condition of your employment is that you obtain that licensure within a certain period of time.
Right.
Or a certificate, if they need a certification for something. I mean, we've done that in Public Works, where we've hired people and they are working their way towards certification. And when they get certified, they leave.
Well, there's that, too.
But...
I'd still like to see the surveyor being... Position, being a surveyor.
Is there a way to look at the surveyor position and then have the land use management still be a department head reporting to the administrator and not hire a land use management director?
Can you say that again on that ball?
Option one has a land use management director and a surveyor, correct? Director? What if we just do the surveyor director and not do a land use management director?
That's status quo. That would have been...
Then you'd have three different EH staff reporting to Scott, I think, at that point in time. And then you'd have Sam reporting to Scott, and then you'd have Doug Forme and his subordinate staff reporting to Scott. So it increases the number of direct reports that the county administrator has to do something with.
Is that an option to look at? I mean, that wouldn't hire another staff person. Correct. I mean, and that's kind of where I'm looking. If we can hold off on hiring new staff, I understand that, you know, maybe that it's an easier way to do it and it's going to throw more at administration, but is that something we can try and say, wow, six months from now, that really didn't work? So now we kind of come back and say, you know what, land use management does need a director. But I guess this would be the time that we can... Can we look at options to reduce...
We can look at options. I question whether or not we'd lose some of that subject matter expertise that's needed. I mean, of course, there's... Scott's more than capable of providing that managerial support, but I wonder if there's something there that, I don't know, maybe you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I don't know how I feel about that. That... We certainly can look at it and flush that out more. I think if we're mostly focused on not adding FTEs, then we should stick with the current format, if that's the biggest priority, because it's proven to work. But I...
Like you're saying, if you're going to hire a unicorn, if you don't think that's going to work, maybe we just focus on the surveyor and the land use management staying in.
Well, I think the unicorn analogy, and I shouldn't speak for Jessica, I think the unicorn analogy was when we're trying to combine, you know, a person that's in the back room right now, doing all the audio/video here, being a planning content expert, and also being a qualified deputy administrator. That's a unicorn with wings, because I haven't seen one.
They're coming out of college all the time. I don't know, I'm just saying.
No, those are a lot of different, unique skill sets. I mean, and if you look at even Lisa, I mean, she had all, well, minus the AV stuff, but well, she may have had that, I just never saw it. But she certainly had a ton of technical abilities. But even if you look at all the different abilities that Lisa had, it was even... It was probably closer to the last 10, 12 years where we really tapped into the admin side of things. I mean, she didn't... Wasn't tapped for those skills, you know, the first 10 years she was here, so... Yeah, those are pretty unique skill sets, and that's where I think the unicorn comment is with wings is coming from, but...
I just look at our opportunities. I mean, if we can try it without hiring one more at this point, is that worth trying?
Well, that's pretty much the current status quo one, and maybe what you want is the staff to work on the current status quo plus option one and bring those two back for you for the next meeting. I think you've kind of weeded out the other ones.
Go ahead.
On the line of ours, question two from land use managers, maybe transition. Department head, because I question all the directions of department heads, the use of a manager that they all convey to, and then one person that talks to the department. We don't need to create it, put it under administration, one person. Land use management manager, along with the surveying of the departments, and that's why I question Public Works of looking at them as if there's way... But some of these departments, which may fit under just so we don't have to add additional directors, it's maybe create more of those a manager position for land use. Question is, does that have to be a department?
You could certainly...
Yes, it always has to be.
If you want to explore, you know, different options where it's a manager leading functions, we can look at that.
Guess that's what I'd like to see. Like I said, we have opportunities, and right now is an opportunity. Warned us a few years ago when Lisa leaves.
10 years. When I was a township officer, I knew...
Acting as managers, correct, right now? Sam is acting as a manager of that land use management department.
They're both acting as like half-acting department head.
Neither, again, I'll look at it different. I've questioned the department head level, what they need to do from a department head as opposed to a manager. I mean, when you get to all the management team, do we need to add 16 people in the room for the management team meetings? They're not doing land use if they're at a management team meeting. Surveying if they're at a management team meeting.
Okay, so you'll work on a couple for us? Clear as mud? Anything else? Well, thank you for your time. Thank you, staff, for all the input.
Thank you, everybody, for all your work on this.
And please be patient with us, we're still just looking around.
Get there.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, see you tonight.
Yep, 6 o'clock, right? Where?
I think it's up here, I think.
Is it here, in this room?
Or maybe the other one. I think it's here.